All right, I see that it's four o'clock, so I'm going to call the December 7th, 2020 meeting of the Select Board to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Escobedo?
Present.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Present.
Ms. Ackerman?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
And myself, Ms. Bates, present.
Okay, the Select Board is here and I'll remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. So, read consent agenda, which is to approve the November 2nd, 2020 executive session not to be released and the minutes also from November 9th, 2020. Do you have your motion to?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. The Town Manager's report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just a quick, I hope everyone made it through the weather event on Saturday, safe and sound. Based on the reports I received this morning, it sounds like it wasn't as destructive here as it could have been and I think as we had prepared for, which is how you want it. You always want to have it be less than what you prepare for. So, kudos to the teams at CMLP and at CPW, as well as the Police Department and Fire Department for doing their part to make sure that the roads were passable and making sure that outages were not, in fact, I think there was minimal power disruptions, so that was a good thing.
We actually got to use the services because a line got pulled down from our house where it was dangling over the street and they came and reattached the wire to our house. So, it was nice to experience it in person.
Where did you get the bill? That's a joke, kidding, sorry. No, they were on it, they had the full crews in and they were right on it. So...
I happened to drive by, I was in Carlisle and I had to go down Kaiser Road on my way home. And I had never seen this before, all the trucks were gathering. It was about two or three o'clock and had been snowing for, I don't know, maybe half an hour. And it was quite a sight, how many, how much of a production it is to get our roads cleared.
And it's actually remarkably well, I mean, many of the people at CPW who are doing it could probably do it in their sleep, but the orchestration of it depends on, not to get too detailed, depends on the temperature, the duration, the forecast, the precipitation, the type, I mean, there's a lot that goes into it. It's not just hook on the blades and off you go, there's a lot of planning, coordination. And so, that's one of the reasons why they were able to get through it. So, anyway, so that went, I think, as well as it possibly could have. There was, speaking of outages, I did report this to the board, but for others' benefit, there was an internet outage at the high school last week that we didn't discover until kids were already coming to school and so they had to return home for a remote learning day. The outage was actually caused by a car accident that happened in the overnight hours, I think, the evening before, which I don't know if that was Thursday or Friday, but the night before, there was a car had run into a pole and damaged the fiber optic cable. So, one of the things that we, in addition to getting service restored, I think, by that afternoon, our new CIO, Jason, who he met last week, and the IT Director for the schools are now working together to make sure that they have better means of notification when there's a service disruption, because I think there was a gap of communication on that. So, just want to, we were on it, as soon as we found, as soon as we realized what was happening, our crews were on it, but it was a bit of a delay in getting that, in getting that communication together. So, we're taking a lesson learned there. So then, I do have a printed Town Manager's report in the packet for your view, I'm not going to go through all of that, other than to announce for the community's sake that the library is going to be rolling back to curbside service, starting on Monday, the 14th, in response really to the growth in cases here in Concord. And we feel that based on the, you know, the visitors that we had seen in person, it would have a minimal impact on Concord residents. We were having a lot of visitors from other towns, which is fine, that's what a part of, what being a part of a library system is all about, but in the situation we're in right now, discretion being the better part of valor, on making sure that we keep patrons and employees safe, so we're going to be going back to curbside for the time being. And then, one last quick item. So, the Concord Board of Health was recently informed that a number of staff at two Concord residents had tested positive for COVID-19 and were potentially infectious while working at the restaurants. People who ate or purchased takeout food at these restaurants are being advised they may have been exposed, and so they may want to check in with the Board of Health for, it was a while, the dates were at Fiorella's, November 23rd and 22nd to the 27th, and Sorrento's Pizzeria, 21st to the 29th. So, I think in terms of testing, it's kind of beyond that window, but for contact tracing, it may be helpful. So, if you were sick or did in fact test positive after those dates, I would ask you to check in with our Board of Health for, except for, or our Health Department, I guess I should say, for our contact tracing purposes, anyway. So, that's all I have for, other than the printed materials, that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for the Town Manager? Terry?
Yes, thank you for writing that up, that's very helpful. And I did have one question about the hearing that is taking place on December 10th for the special legislation for the license. I noted there are two different times listed, 10:00 AM, it says in one place, and 3:00 to 5:00 PM, it says in another place. So, if you could let us know which of those it is, that would be great.
Sure, Linda and I are working with Representative Govea's office on the coordination out, so we'll nail all the details down with the Board now.
Great. Okay, so I'll move on to the Chair's report. And if there's no objection from the Select Board members, I would like to hear item number six prior to item number five, just for the sake of the discussion and schedule this afternoon. Okay, and no objection, then I'd like to read a statement on behalf of the Select Board. The Select Board is aware of an article published last month in the Concord Journal that describes a letter to the Board from certain defendants in the Esterbrook Road lawsuit. This letter accused Town Council of harassment for raising the Board's concerns about surveillance and signage on Esterbrook Trail. The Select Board would like to share the following statement that Town Council gave to the Journal. The Select, and I quote, "The Select Board has been aware for some time of video surveillance near the entrance to the trail. More recently, however, the Board learned from certain defendants that some audio surveillance and more extensive video surveillance is taking place along the trail. After learning this, we discussed with defendants' council the public's interest in being told that they are being surveilled in areas where the court has required public access. Also, council for the town has corresponded with the Rasmussen's council about signage near the trail that is inconsistent with the court's order prohibiting defendants from posting signage that is, quote, 'designed, intended, or tends to have the effect of discouraging or prohibiting public access,' end of quote. It is unfortunate that the Rasmussen's chose to view the town's efforts to protect the public's interest and to ensure compliance with the court's order as harassment." And that's the end of the paragraph that was included in the Journal. The statement goes on that the Select Board would like to add, as we have said repeatedly, that this lawsuit is not about taking sides, it is not about a personal attack on any of our town residents, it is not about ownership of the land on or around Esterbrook Trail. This lawsuit is about one thing, the right of members of the public to use Esterbrook Trail. It is incumbent on the Board to protect such rights when they are at risk. The Select Board is pleased that so far the town's position has prevailed in court. We obtained a preliminary injunction this past summer requiring public access. This lawsuit, excuse me. And in recent pretrial proceedings, the court largely agreed with the town about the type of evidence that should be allowed at trial and denied the defendants' motions to exclude the town's evidence. The trial is currently scheduled for late February. The Board looks forward to resolving this case for all involved. The rules for parking, trail use, and mask wearing are posted near the entrance to the trail on Esterbrook Road. The town is enforcing these rules through regular police patrols and tracking and responding to landowner complaints. The town also plans to hire a part-time, year-round ranger to help enforce compliance with the rules. We continue to ask for the public's compliance with the posted parking and trail rules as this matter works its way through the courts." And that concludes the statement from the Select Board. Okay, I'd like to move on now to item six, which is a continuation of the November 30th, 2020 public hearing, application by National Grid for grant of location to install and maintain approximately 2,173 feet of 12-inch gas main on Walden Street. Will, your motion from the clerk?
Move to continue the public hearing from November 30th, 2020, for an application by National Grid for grant of location to install and maintain approximately 2,173 feet of 12-inch gas main on Walden Street. Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, and that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. So, I see that we have representatives from our DPW here today, and we also have David Waterfall from National Grid, representing National Grid, and Mary Mahoney. So...
Linda, I believe Attorney Foskett should be here with us, while he's planning on being here, but I'll just briefly summarize where we've come from the last hearing, the Board's benefit, from the last discussion about it. And there was a lot of discussion between the town and National Grid, and the conditions that you have, that were in the packet, are, represents basically a give and take to, for the sake of this project, between National Grid and the town. And so, I don't want to speak for Steve, but I think, but I think we're good proceeding with the conditions as they are presented.
Okay, Stephen, did you want to add anything to that?
Just a couple. Stephen Crane, I don't think the attorney is going to be present according to Director Kat Kat.
Okay.
He'd said that. Yes, as the Town Manager mentioned, there was this back and forth, and we have settled. I could just highlight a couple of things, so that everyone is comfortable where we are. Condition one, so we had submitted that memo and the date is December 4th. The condition one has been revised, so that if National Grid should file, should they file for, as a leak-prone rehab project, the town will be notified, so we are satisfied with that. Conditions two, three, and four have to do with abandoning the existing main and the proposed main in the future. And we, how we were able to get National Grid to agree to that is that by adding in condition five, under the right-of-way permit, that any provisions other than five in the memo that do not meet the standard, National Grid follows, which is the DTA, the DTE 9822 standard, they will have to meet that standard. So, that's how that was covered. And so, we have agreed upon keeping conditions two, three, and four. So, the one big change is where the, and there is Attorney Foskett, but let me just finish this. The big change is the removal of the life cycle maintenance fee. The town was willing to accept that this provision not be included in this approval. However, we are going to make sure that we follow those construction standards strictly. National Grid does follow those standards. We are going to hold them to that, we are going, because we do believe that cutting the pavement does cause deterioration of the pavement and premature failure of the street. We will monitor the construction and should there be any problems, we will bring those to National Grid's attention. So, as far as we are concerned in Public Works, we have agreed with National Grid, those provisions, sixteen of them in the memo, we urge approval, as long as those sixteen conditions are kept as part of the approval.
Okay, thank you for that update. Mr. Waterfall, I think, it sounds like there has been agreement and meeting of the minds between the two of you, so are you prepared for us to move forward?
We are, and we would ask you to vote to accept the application with the revised conditions that you have. And the only thing I would add is, and I'm sure there's not going to be hesitation, but I encourage the Engineering Department at any time to contact National Grid if anything comes up regarding concerns about the road restoration. And we will certainly, I will certainly personally ensure that someone contacts the Engineering Department immediately and we address your concerns as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. All right, do I hear any other discussion from the Board?
Yeah, I'd just like to hear it from Mr. Foskett about his thinking on this.
He's not present today, as?
Yeah, he is, he jumped in there.
Well, he did, okay.
Yeah, sorry, I just got on, so.
Okay, Mr. Foskett?
Yeah, I think, I think the revised memo will work, I think, you know, we had a little issue with the life cycle maintenance fee and we worked that out. So, I think the way it's structured now is that when these issues arise, and if they arise, then the town will deal directly with Grid with it. We've attached the regulations that Grid has to comply with in terms of maintenance and replacement of pipes, or I should say, disconnections and reconnections. And if there's problems in the future, then we address it at that time. The life cycle maintenance fee, I thought there was an issue with the case that was cited, and I thought it would be less of a controversy if we put it out, took it out and went with the other provisions that were in the memo in sections two through four.
Okay, very good, and I think represented by others who have already spoken. Terry, did you have a comment you needed to make?
I have a question, I'm not sure who in National Grid might address this, but last time we talked about what would happen if this is not approved and the project couldn't go forward, and you said that on the coldest days of the year, some of the customers might not have enough heat. So, my question is, how many Concord households in this area had a problem last year with, on the coldest days, or, you know, not having enough heat?
I think, I think our engineer might be able to lend some information on that. I would just say in a preliminary way that, you know, National Grid does have a statutory right under general laws, 164, to locate our facilities in the public way, just subject to the conditions of the Select Board. But with that being said, if Robert House from my team is on, is on the line, he might be able to give some background on that.
David, I'm here, I unfortunately don't have an answer to the Board member's question at this time.
Okay. All right, Jane?
This may be a, while I think that the Attorney for National Grid, Attorney Waterfall indicated a absolute priority of response to a phone call, I wanted to ask our Attorney, Mr. Foskett, what in, what actual enforcement language exists? Should, you know, Attorney Waterfall no longer be with Grid, in other words, should the parties to this agreement right now no longer be present, what is the, what approach does Concord have vis a vis enforcement of these conditions?
Well, I think the conditions are laid out in the memorandum, that's, it'll be attached to the GOL, and the regulation, 9822, will be attached as well.
Right.
So, if this issue, I think enforcement would go to the level of the DPU.
Yeah, and I would add that we do have people in Stakeholder Management who are, and I believe we have a representative from the team on Shemad tonight, but as you can imagine, you know, working in so many cities and towns in Massachusetts, issues related to paving and road restoration, patching, come up all the time, and we have people who, it's their responsibility to deal directly with municipalities to address those concerns. So, it's, it's something that we deal with constantly and something we take seriously, and we always are willing to have any kind of dialogue with the cities and towns to address these issues.
I think, but I think beyond that, the question is, how do you, if we don't get that satisfaction, how do we enforce it? And my answer to that is, the next level would be to go to the DPU and ask for relief, or ask them to have grid relief, and then it would be a quasi-litigation matter, or regulatory issue.
Thank you.
All right. Any further comments from the Board? If not, I'd like to move to comments from the public. Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'm going to ask for, oh, I see, I do see Mark Alas, would you like to unmute yourself and?
Yes, thank you very much, Mark Alas, 62 Prescott Road. I just want to mention for the benefit of the applicant, what I had already mentioned, pointed out in a note to the Select Board members, that the memorandum of conditions refers to a standard operating procedure document as part of it incorporated by reference, and that does call out for protection of critical root zones of trees, you know, public shade trees there, so piling of pipe or heavy equipment being parked on or moving over is something to be avoided, if at all possible. I just wanted to point that out, because it wasn't explicit, certain things for tree protection were explicit in the memorandum, but by reference, this is also included. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could respond, I would just say that we will certainly work with the tree warden to address any potential impact on public shade trees.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask the clerk for a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous, and the chair so declares. So, now we're ready to move on to the motion. Will the clerk please propose a motion?
Move to approve the application by National Grid for grant of location to install and maintain approximately 2,173 feet of 12-inch gas main on Walden Street, with conditions as specified in the memo from Concord Public Works to the Select Board dated December 4th, 2020.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, and that is a result of four in favor to approve and one opposed, and the chair so declares. So, I want to thank all the parties who have worked on this over an extended period of time for reaching an agreement, and we hope for a successful project here. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you on behalf of National Grid, and everybody have a safe and happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malroni. All right, I'm going to move on to APP 63 update, which is the new fleet electrification policy, and I believe Kate Hanley is here to introduce this.
Yes, hi, everyone, Kate Hanley, Sustainability Director. I believe in your packet was a draft of the updated policy. I'll just give you a little context for the update here. We currently have a fuel-efficient vehicle policy that sets requirements for fuel economy standards for town fleet vehicles, calls for, you know, the most efficient use of vehicles, and restricts transfers of old and efficient vehicles between departments. This policy is a requirement to be a green community, which we've been since 2013, and it's been in place since then. But what I'm proposing now is that we replace this policy with an electric-first, sustainable fleet policy. The electric-first approach basically suggests that when purchasing a new vehicle, we should first consider whether an electric option is available, affordable, and of course, meets the needs of the department. And then, if not, consider a plug-in, electric vehicle, a hybrid, and then a traditional, fuel-efficient, conventional vehicle. So, I drafted this policy adapting our current policy, so it maintains much of the original language, but adds in this electric-first concept. And the idea behind this is that, of course, the technology and availability of electric vehicles has advanced a lot since 2013, when we became a green community and adopted our original policy, and we know that EVs are practical and cost-effective and have a lot of benefits, including lower operating costs, in addition to all the environmental benefits around reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. And we've already been basically following this approach of electric first. We deployed three new Nissan Leafs in the last month, one for driver's ed, one for MMN, and one for facilities. And that's because the cost of these new vehicles, especially like the Nissan Leaf, is comparable, if not cheaper, with rebate funding available, and they really meet the needs of our department. So, we've had a lot of success deploying electric vehicles in our fleet, and updating our policy will just kind of codify what we've already been doing and also show leadership to go above and beyond what DOE are requires for green communities. And it's also one of the implementation steps in our Climate Action Plan, under the action to implement a plan to electrify our fleet. So, this policy's already been reviewed by SMT, and they've made some edits there. It's also been reviewed by the Green Communities Team at DER, who said that it meets their requirements, so we'll continue to be in good standing as a green community, and they really liked that it was going above and beyond and want to use it as a model for other communities who want to do the same, which is great. So, just happy to answer any of your questions as you review this, and hopefully we can get this approved as an updated APP. And the next step for me will be talking with the superintendent and discussing updating the school's policy, because they have their own separate policies for their vehicles. So, this policy is for town department vehicles, and hopefully we can get an update to their policy that aligns with this one. So, I'll stop there and see what questions you have for me.
Well, certainly, you know, we want to move forward with our sustainability and resilience goals, and also some pre-planning for energy conservation, and so we're happy to hear this item today and give you some feedback on it. So, I saw Susan's hand go up first, so Susan, would you like to come in?
Yes, thank you, thanks, Kate. This is a very futuristic, I guess, probably not the word. It's, I agree with, I mean, it seems like a very green-friendly policy that doesn't seem to have, it allows for exceptions like for bigger vehicles, et cetera. But, so I had two questions. One is, is there adequate charging infrastructure in the town where these vehicles would be to recharge them? And two, under the, let's see, it's on page two, it's item, the part that deals with medium, heavy, and light-duty vehicles. It says a light duty is gross weight of less than 8,500, heavy is over 8,500, but then it says medium- But then it says medium is between 8,500 and 10,000. So I was just confused about the weight categories or the, you know, why that would have that range.
That's a great question, Susan. I'm looking at that, too. And that might just be a typo. So I'll double check that those numbers make sense logically. To your question about charging, that's a that's a great question. So what we've been doing so far when we get electric vehicles is working with the facilities team to get set up for charging that's most convenient for that vehicle's operation. So we have a charger at the townhouse for the vehicles that's parked there. We have charging at the police station for their plug-in vehicles. We have charging at Public Works for a vehicle that is parked there. So we've been kind of making that happen as it goes. I think that as we deploy even more, we'll have to look at additional charging infrastructure needs. And that's part of the scope of work for for an upcoming project that Stephen and I have been working on to do a full study to look at if we had a fully electric fleet or when we have a fully electric fleet, what are our charging needs going to be? So we're working on that in tandem to make sure that we have that good to go and planned ahead of time.
Thank you.
Jane?
Yep.
Kate, this is this is exciting. And it's sort of, you know, it's interesting reading it. I'm like, that's kind of the policy I want to I try and follow in my own home. So excellent. To follow up on Susan's question about the charging, since we know that the making sure there are enough charging stations to to supply electricity to to charge the car to the fleet is important. So is there placement? And because this is a town fleet, we can potentially utilize them not unlike, you know, storage. So we can also place them appropriately throughout our our own small grid to support Concord's needs. And so I just want to encourage that to be part of the study. I would in fact make that a priority. Because, you know, this is one of the many ways that Concord has the opportunity to really pilot this as an example of a muni green community. And as one of the first muni green communities, I think that's an important role that we play. And in fact, I would hesitate to guess that there might even be some funding to support that kind of additional study.
Thanks, Jane. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Terri.
Thank you, Kate, for taking the initiative to put this together. It's really good. I have two questions. Section five about vehicle procurement. It says that police cruisers and fire command center vehicles and heavy-duty vehicles are exempt from this policy. So my first question is, when you say they're exempt from this policy, you could read that in two ways. I think maybe what you mean is they're exempt from item five, vehicle procurement. I don't think that you mean exempt from the entire fleet policy, but I wasn't sure what that meant. And then my second question is about those vehicles, police, fire, and heavy duty. Are they subject to the anti-idling provision that you have earlier in the policy? Or are they not are they exempt from the anti-idling and why?
Great questions, Terri. So on the question of the police cruisers being exempt from the whole policy, that language was in the previous policy. So that was just maintained that they were exempt from meeting the fuel efficiency requirements because they have a lot of other technology and equipment on their vehicles that that can influence the the fuel efficiency. I will say the police department has already has two plug-in vehicles. So they're really leading the way on electrifying where they can. So that's really exciting. And we've seen a lot of new police vehicles coming out that are hybrids. And so I think we'll see even more options for electric vehicles for police and fire vehicles down the line. And on your second question about, remind me your second question, sorry.
Heavy-duty vehicles.
Okay. About the anti-idling.
Yeah. And I think the anti-idling, this policy just refers to the state law that is anti-idling. So this policy doesn't add any other any other restrictions to to know that the state has an anti-idling policy. But I'm not sure what the the details of that. Stephen looks like he's going to jump in.
Yeah, so green communities, actually, I believe, had those exemptions in place as a part of their rules. I know this Long Meadow, actually, Long Meadow and Concord get designated the same day as a green community in 2013. So I am more than passing familiar with this from my time previous. And so so the green communities, and this is, and as Kate mentioned at the outset, this policy is based on isn't really an update of our green communities vehicle policy. I'm sure that they're going to be updating their, you know, guidance. But I believe the the command staff vehicles for the for the police department are hybrid. I believe we're ordering hybrid interceptors as well. The new fire department command vehicle is a hybrid. So but these are all just coming to market like in the last year or two. So this is all very, very recent and very exciting. I remember, you know, like in a previous time, trying to order a hybrid interceptor vehicle, and you couldn't because of the electrical systems couldn't take all the accessory equipment you needed. So this is the technology has been moving fast. And I think the heavy-duty vehicles are still, I mean, there are those who will tell you that they're closer than than I than at least I've seen. But the fleet electrification study is kind of building on this to see where we can go with the larger heavy-duty vehicles as well. And like I said, the state has rules on idling that's taking into consideration, you know, operational needs. And there are, especially for public safety, there are times where idling is an operational standard. And then a lot of heavy-duty vehicles are diesel, and they need to idle, especially in the those vehicles you saw lined up, Terri, were probably all idling so the the diesel fuel didn't gel and they could operate. So again, I think as the technology evolves to where idling isn't needed and more heavy-duty, either hybrid or all-electric vehicles are available, our departments, you know, know that the community has really has a mandate to purchase them and not wait and purchase them early. So that's why we want we want to be early adopters. And we hopefully, these the policies that Kate has drafted show that.
And the great news about idling is if we electric vehicles, idling's a non-issue.
Yeah.
Right. So just to follow up on each.
Terri, before you do that, if I could turn to Matt, please.
Okay, I I was fine with Terri going. But the I would just say I did just look up the vehicle weight classes. And even on the federal level, the Federal Highway Administration, the U.S. Census Bureau, and the EPA all have overlapping definitions of light, medium, and heavy duty. So I think we just need to identify the authority and the type of classification. So I could totally see where you might have come up with overlapping. They definitely do. I also wanted to just commend this policy in part because I think that for municipal uses, electric vehicles are, you know, not only green, but I think they're probably functionally superior for these use cases. You know, you've got lots of short trips, a lot of stop and go, you know, regenerative braking, just the torque of electric motor, all of these things just and the low maintenance. All of these things for a full life cycle cost are going to really benefit the town. So I think that this is good business sense as well as a good environmental sense.
Exactly. Well, yeah.
My sources are telling me that I missed I misspoke. The interceptors aren't hybrids. I know we're looking at them. We ordered a set of F-150s for CPW that are hybrid.
I saw a hybrid police vehicle yesterday. So I did see one, said hybrid right on the side.
I thought I thought we had as well, but I'm not, like I said, I'm getting information. But I do know we have ordered some. So this is the first year of the F-150 hybrid. And I think we've already, in fact, I think I've seen one of those as well in person.
Okay, well, I think a Tesla police interceptor could be pretty impressive.
Hard to get somebody in and out of the back of that, though.
Terri, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. So I just want to follow up on Kate and Stephen's comments. So in section five, I just think it should be clarified. I know that you took it from the old policy. So it says that they're exempt from this policy. And I don't think you mean that they're exempt from the entire fleet policy, right? They're just exempt from this section of the policy? I don't know. I just think that should maybe be clarified in that section five. And also, maybe to add something about me, because obviously, if an electric vehicle is idling, that's fine. But it says right in the beginning that one of the goals is anti-idling for, you know, gas and diesel vehicles. So maybe to just add in a phrase where it's appropriate about encouraging wherever possible. Because I agree with Stephen that sometimes safety vehicles can't be turned off. But sometimes they can. And so that's being encouraged.
So I do want to clarify. I think that I think heavy-duty vehicles are exempt from the entire policy. And again, that's not Concord's thing, that's Green Communities' thing. And I think that that is somewhat of a vestige of, you know, when the Green Communities guidelines were written now, probably almost close to 10 years ago. So I do see that as something that's changing. And we may, I mean, obviously, we want, we have our own, you know, policies and procedures for things as well that that discard idling. But I do think they're exempt from the entire policy. But that, like I said, that's not our local rule. That was a state rule. And both the F-150s and our new interceptors are hybrid. Sorry, I'm getting I'm getting the peanut gallery digitally is communicating with me.
Guess you have to filter it.
Yes.
So if I could just make a couple of comments as well. And again, thank you for doing this. If I'm reading the correct draft that was sent to us in the under background, it refers to non-exempt municipal vehicles. And I was wondering why that was.
I think that is because, as Stephen said, the police and fire vehicles are exempt. So the policy applies to everything else.
Okay. And then it does refer to the town of Concord's Select Board. And it does say municipal vehicles. So I see, and even though the schools have a separate policy, you know, I don't know if you need want to just clarify that or differentiate there or not. Another suggestion I had is that under the policy statement, as you read down about the fourth or fifth paragraph, you talk, it's recognized that all departments will take action. And I just have a question there. I assume that includes CMLP, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, good. And then where you on the next page, where you further this policy is adopted in order to, and then the second bullet there is comply with doer green communities program requirements. Is there any way that you can give a specific website reference to connect people to what you're referring there? I just think that would be helpful for the public as well as the departments.
Sure, yeah, we can definitely add a link there to to their requirements.
Yeah. And then the other more of a question. What is the general turnover for new vehicles? We must have some schedule there. How frequently? What's the total number of? And I'm not talking about medium or heavy equipment at this point. I'm thinking more of the the light auto requirements. Some sense of the scope of the of the fleet there as well as the turnover. And I think we talked about one time that it's about a $3,000 to $4,000 additional upfront cost. Does that sound right? Or do you are you using a different number?
So on the on the upfront cost, I'll let Stephen answer the turnover question. On the upfront cost, we're actually seeing that it's now down to practically nothing with with the grants that are available from the state. So the last Nissan Leaf we got was about $22,000, which is pretty much the same as as another comparable vehicle. At times, it might be might be slightly more. But I would say it's 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 within that range you gave him and probably lower and will continue to be so. Stephen, can you answer the the turnover question?
Yeah, I think so the answer is it depends. A police cruiser has about a three-year life cycle. But an administrative vehicle can last significantly longer than that. It depends on the type of use, the mile, and not just the annual mileage. Like police vehicles have relatively, I mean, they put on a healthy amount of miles, but it's the hours in operation that's very high. A heavy-duty, you know, tri-axle dump truck is going to last 10, 15 years. So it really depends on the the nature of the use and the type of vehicle. Sorry, I wish I could be more specific than that.
No, that's fine. That's fine. And and then, you know, often when we're looking at either policy updates or best practices, trying to, you know, be futuristic in our approach here, oftentimes, there may be some concurrent or near-term grant opportunities that are available. Are there any specific to this beyond the one you already mentioned, Kate?
The one that I mentioned is the the state EVIP is the acronym that's available. And that funds $7,500 for a fully electric vehicle. It's very easy to get, and and that program's pretty well-funded. So we've been using that one. But Green Communities also funds electric vehicles, which I think might be more applicable to heavy and medium-duty vehicles as we find, you know, new technologies and new applications for those types of vehicles. I would be more inclined to use Green Communities' funds for the because it'll be a little bit less straightforward than just getting a traditional passenger vehicle. So there's at least two right now and probably more that aren't top of mind.
Yeah, terrific. And I know you've been taking advantage of of that. So that's helpful. Jane?
Following up on Linda's question and Kate, your your answer, it made me think about some of the the things we wrestled with when we were first looking at the alternative vehicles, school bus work that led to our first electric school bus. In that a lot of these vehicles, especially in the heavy-duty category, when they have to be replaced, they have to be replaced. We don't have a lot of window of saying, well, we'd like to wait until something else is there. And one of the things we wrestled with was leasing in the interim period of time so that we weren't committing to, as as Stephen just remarked on, a 15-year life cycle of diesel, heavy-duty truck. When, you know, it when projecting forward, it might be five years. And all of a sudden, there's a new electric version on the market. Is that something you're you're looking at in this process?
That's a great question, Jane. And I just made a note to be sure that that's in the scope of work for our fleet study because I think that's a good question to make sure we're building in. Because part of that study will look at our inventory of vehicles and what the electric options are now. And hopefully, some a guidance on what we expect to be an option. But I think in the case where maybe there's an expected option, but we need a new vehicle now, I think that would be good to consider whether leasing might might be a good fit in the interim. So that's that's helpful.
Okay, can I just do anything I do want to add, though, is this is the part where I have to say that that the operational demands of the vehicle are still, you know, a top priority for vehicle replacement and and what we choose. And we still have to plow the snow, you know, you know, do what we need to do. So I just don't I just want to make sure that we do want to make sure we green the fleet, but we also have operational capacity that we need to sustain.
Well, and that's why I suggested a leasing program, i.e., we're not talking about waiting and seeing. We're talking about an alternative to sinking our own assets into something that we may want to replace.
And I think when there are comparable vehicles available to lease, I think that is a great idea. It's just making sure that the availability is there for what we need.
Jane, if I understand you correctly, you're proposing that that might be an amendment to this particular policy?
Yeah. Yes, I'd want to see how Kate might want to look at that, Kate and Stephen, in putting it into the policy.
So we've had a couple substantive comments here this evening that maybe would it be helpful, Kate, if you had a chance to look at this and come back to us next week? And just either adding a couple of references here or reexamining the issues that have been brought up?
Sure.
I think we're we want to move on this because it's it's good progress. But at the same time, I think you may need a little time to respond to these comments. But at the same time, I think you may need a little time to respond to these comments.
Sure. I'm happy to make some updates and bring it back next week for a final vote, if that sounds good.
Sounds comfortable for everybody?
I'm with me.
Yeah. Okay, good. Well, thanks very much, and we'll see you next week.
Thanks, everyone. See you next week.
Okay, the next item on the discussion is, on the agenda is a discussion of the transportation initiatives. And in our packet was a material from, a memo from Marcia, updating us on, all of us on a number of initiatives that are going on. That is a busy department, I have to say.
Yes.
And I see Marcia has joined us.
Yes. Yes. We're never, never a dull moment in planning.
Thank you for providing that summary. Very helpful for us.
So do you want me to go through the list or just?
You did, you did a good job of highlighting everything. I'm just wondering if the, maybe see if board has questions for Marcia? Carrie?
Thank you so much, Marcia. This really outlines a lot of initiatives. You have been really busy. A couple of questions are, number four, Cross-Town Connect. It says that the Town of Concord has been a participating member community since 2017. And I'm just wondering if you could explain a little more what what we have to do to be a member? Do we pay some kind of dues? And what kind of benefits do we get? That's my first question. And then my second question is, a few weeks ago, I believe it was Stephen in your town manager report, you spoke about another grant called Making Connections, grant that we're working with Sudbury, something about the private taxis. And I don't know if I'm confused, or this was omitted, or what happened with that?
So Marcia explained, but the Making the Connections grant was one that we had already completed for a different type of study. And then this livery grant was a new one, but Marcia can provide much greater level of detail there.
I wish I could, but I haven't been able to find my notes on that. But first, we'll take up the Cross-Town Connect. Concord got involved in this whole idea of a Transportation Management Association back in 2007, 2008, when Acton was looking at some things that they were doing and saw the need for, across many of our communities because we are at a nexus of three different regional transportation associations. We're the, we're part of the MBTA's Transportation Association. And we wanted to have conversations. We've been participating in those conversations, but it wasn't until 2017 when we identified funds that we could use to pay our dues for that privilege of being a full member. And we haven't gotten a lot of service, if you will, of vehicles or dispatch or anything. But we are part of the, we are at the table. And Cross-Town Connect staff were able to work with us and help prepare our application for the Workforce Transportation Grant. And they would, they would have been the entity that we would hope to contract with to implement that grant. Unfortunately, earlier this spring, when we realized that commuting habits were greatly changed and that we wouldn't have a realistic transit system in place because people were not using public transportation to the same degree, we requested that it be extended. And the state, because of a loss of revenues, pulled back that grant funding. So we were successful, and then we, because of the pandemic, lost that funding. So we are continuing to be a member of Cross-Town Connect, and we are continuing to explore different ways that we might take advantage of their programs. And they are here to help people get from point A to point B. They're here to help us when we have those conversations. And we work with our local businesses to try to identify ways to improve, where we don't have transit, to try to figure out ways to do transit. Which brings us to the question you asked about the taxi grant or the livery grant. That is a very specific grant that is for, intended to provide funding for local taxis or liveries. And Sudbury reached out to us to talk further about would Concord be interested? They've identified two sources of businesses that could provide transit service for our residents. Taxi, Tommy's Taxi is one, and I think JFK Livery is the other. They have the paratransit-type vehicles that would help people who had disabilities. It's a limited program, but it would be available for income-eligible residents to use a taxi to get from point A to point B, either to work, to medical appointments, or to get groceries. One of the issues that we have found is that there is a small group of people who are unable to access the food bank in Maynard. So how do you get people from Concord to Maynard? So that grant was submitted, I think, just before Thanksgiving. It was a Thanksgiving gift from Sudbury to have worked with the communities of Maynard, Sudstow, Concord, and Sudbury to get this application in. And we're waiting to hear about that.
Marcia, if I could just follow up with a quick question. You mentioned it was a limited targeted group, income, a low-income group. Did that apply to both of the contractors? I didn't catch the name of the first contractor.
Tommy's Taxi is the first contractor, and yes, it's for both countries.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for Marcia on the initiatives? I was excited to see the funding for the Asabek Pedestrian Bridge. You know, particularly the second level of funds that have come in for that?
We're very excited about that. The town had appropriated, the Community Preservation Grant for $250,000, approved at the September town meeting, is being combined with a state Mass Trails Grant Program for $135,000. So we have contracted with Greenman Peterson Incorporated, and they have subcontracted with the design architect La Dalman, who worked with us to prepare several different scenarios and helped design various locations connecting West Concord Village to the Baker Ave, 300 Baker Ave site.
There was a great forum where they presented their, yeah?
So that is now being designed. The town has included a capital improvement item for some funds, not the entire funding. We were initially thinking that we would have to have this a local funding effort. We've made some outreach to the state, our District 4, Mass DOT District 4 Engineering. And if we were able to bring the trail all the way over to Baker Ave a public way, then they would be able to consider it as part of their programs for transportation improvement programs. So one of the first things that Greenman Peterson will be doing is preparing that project notification or project need form for the state to consider it funding. And we've been in negotiations with preliminary discussions, I shouldn't say negotiations, because the property has changed hands, and there's a new owner at 300 Baker Ave. And just this spring, we were making outreach, and we've had some preliminary conversations about providing an easement, a public access easement, from the point where the bridge would enter their property to Baker Ave that would allow for that, the state to consider funding the bridge.
Jane?
Thank you. Marcia, this is, this is exciting. And compliments to everybody on this quite extensive list. Even where we lost our funding, you know, clearly, it wasn't, it was an act beyond anyone's control. I was very curious about, because it actually aligned with the conversation I was a part of earlier this week on the number nine, additional grants being considered under Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Program, which is specifically looking at, how do we, and it goes, it actually ties right into the storm prep that we, that everybody conducted so well. How do those who are, especially students, who are biking this winter, how do we take into consideration the needs for safe streets for bicycles alongside, and also pedestrians? But humans have a braking capacity that's different from a bicycle, both of which are very different from the modern technology in a car. And so ice and snow and other winter hazards affect those alternative forms of transportation very differently. And I, you know, while my kids are not out on the streets biking to school here anymore, I'd like to be biking on the streets. But the question is, what do we do to, to make sure, you know, to enhance the safety there? And also on our section of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail?
I don't think any of these grants can answer that question, Jane. The town, the advisory committee, and I think, not sure if this was a town meeting vote or what, but the only area of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail that we are plowing is right around the train station itself so that people can get access to the platform. And it was not the intention to plow the Bruce Freeman. It was meant to be for wintertime activities and use, such as cross-country skiing or snowshoeing and so forth. So without, without some direction from a higher level than myself, I would not, I think we'd need to look at that more seriously and consider what the impacts might be.
Well, I'm not necessarily advocating for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail to be plowed, but I'm thinking about all of the streets in Concord. And again, since we discussed, it would seem to fall right in into this additional grants under Shared Winter Streets. Sharing is multiple uses.
That grant has, the application was made last Friday. And it is for that outdoor dining experience. And what they had intended with the grant is to fund use of outdoor spaces for recreational purposes. I don't, when I attended the workshop, no one mentioned this idea of bicycling and using streets. But ways-
I think it was really intended as, sorry, Marcia, it really was intended as an economic development, you know, kind of a life preserver to businesses who are going to struggle with outdoor dining because there aren't public places. That was certainly when the messaging came out of Lieutenant Governor's Office. That was the focus.
Okay, so it's less of transportation and more of economic?
Well, it applies to our streets and within our right-of-way, but it really is more creating spaces.
Okay.
Carrie? You're on mute. There you go.
I was just going to say, Linda, it looked like you were talking, but you were on mute.
Yeah. I was asking if there were any other, yes, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Marcia? If not, thank you so much, Marcia. And, you know, it's an ongoing cycle where you're working to apply for the grants, waiting, trying to match funding with other sources. I mean, it's a real challenge to keep multiple applications going simultaneously. And we appreciate all the work that goes into this.
Linda, if you could bear with me, there was one item that I forgot to list here.
Please, please.
That is, last fall, there was a safety group. The state asked to meet with town officials. And we went out to the intersection of Elm Street and Baker Ave and Route 2 and did a preliminary safety study. This is similar to what happened three years ago with the Rotary. So I think you'll be seeing some improvements at that intersection of Baker Ave and Elm Street maybe in two to three years, which I think will be very exciting. One of the things I raised at that point in time is the need for bicycle access across there, possibly even pedestrian access there. And there are groups that are talking about that now. We've, I've had several inquiries from a bicycle group about how do we connect to the new bridge once it's installed and to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail? And how do we connect that back to Concord Center? So that's, that's part of the conversation that's ongoing. And I just wanted to, as I said, I forgot to mention that.
With MTA or who did you?
It's with Mass DOT. It's part of their Safety Improvements Program.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Yeah, that's good. Matt?
Yeah, I mean, to that end, I'm kind of surprised about the possibility of doing the easement to Baker Ave near where the railroad tracks cross Baker Ave, rather than heading out towards Baker Ave Extension, you know, towards where Elm Street crossing is. Because that would seem to be more, you know, to the point of trying to get into Concord Center if you were going to try to bike across from West Concord and, you know, not along Main Street. I guess it may, there may be wetlands issues. I could imagine there's any number of issues going that direction. But it seems like it would be a better direction to go if possible, if feasible.
All right. Thank you, Marcia. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm going to move on to the official annual town meeting calendar. We're making progress, but this has been one of those, keep, keep working on it. Keep working on it. I think we're pretty close to being able to publish an official annual town meeting calendar. We, we received today from Kari some suggested dates for election dates, which we needed in order, we needed to, one, here where she was coming from, and also, we need to approve them so that we could publish the official annual town meeting calendar in the form that the public has come to expect.
So Linda, she, I don't know if you can see her on your screen. Kari is here.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know. She just popped in, so.
I just popped in.
I'm not, you know, oh, there she, there you are, Kari. Welcome. So do you want to speak to the information you sent? That would be helpful.
Yes, certainly. Yes, the town manager suggested March 25th, which is a Thursday. I had asked for consideration of a Thursday because it gives us more time during the week leading up to the election to prepare. And so March 25th, which is a Thursday in 2021, works well. It would, it would take into consideration from the time of the caucus, if, if we're able to hold a caucus, which would traditionally, it's, it's at the end of January. So that would be January 25th. And the deadline to submit nomination papers being 49 days prior to the election would be Thursday, February 4th. Voter registration deadline, which is typically 20 days prior to the election, would be Friday, March 5th, and election day, Thursday, March 25th, 2021. Now, the issue with caucuses is that it's a gathering. I think last spring, many towns held caucuses out of doors. I have heard that Bedford has appealed to the governor through a legislative act to allow the select board, if they decide that it is not safe, to cancel the caucus and, in lieu of that, to allow for reduced number of signatures on nomination papers, reducing it to 10. And that was filed, I think, end of November. And it has been approved by both the Senate and the House.
So was that a home, you know, sort of a home rule request as opposed to?
I think it was a special act request.
Yeah. As opposed to asking for them to act on general legislation that would cover everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah. We would have to do the same.
Can we hold the caucus by Zoom? Can we ask?
Under current legislation, apparently that's not, is my understanding, which is why they had to.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, I have asked the elections director, and she said she hasn't heard of any, any legislation that is, you know, encompasses all towns that hold caucuses. any legislation that is, you know, encompasses all towns that hold caucuses to allow for that or or for Zoom, caucuses via Zoom. And I have queried clerks in the Commonwealth that have not heard back from all of the ones holding caucuses, because I know there was the idea to hold a Zoom caucus last, this past spring, but I've not heard back.
I know Bedford, this came up at a recent HATS committee meeting, and I know Bedford would have, you know, the logical outcome was Zoom, but there was some technicality with the legislation, so which is why they went the route they did with their
Okay.
request. But, you know, that's something we could check out further. Matt?
Well, having been elected in this past year and under the circumstances with the delay of the election and so forth, I just was surprised to see the dates being so early in the year that, you know, it seems like we're holding our election and caucus dates to pretty much the same as a typical year as opposed to offsetting them the way that we have offset town meeting. And I think there are a few things that would argue against doing that. One is, of course, the the current progression of the virus. Second is that there are a large number of candidates that really need to be, I guess, encouraged to run, in particular, three candidates for the Housing Authority. And then, thirdly, just having experienced last year being elected and then having a period of some months before I actually took my seat, it was a very awkward position. And I think that we typically hold these elections much closer to town meeting, which then, you know, gives a more, I don't know, quick turnover of power, if you will, or and and I think that that is a good thing. So I just wonder why we couldn't hold the election in May and offset the caucus date to, you know, March and likewise the other dates in the in the plan to just be more in relative terms what we are doing for town meeting states.
Kari, do you want to respond? And I also have a comment to make.
Sure. One of, one of the issues is that we're in temporary quarters right now while renovations are being conducted at the townhouse. So we don't know exactly when they'll be complete, and we don't want to move in the midst of the election process. So this is a chunk of time that we know will be still at the Harley Willer Community Center. And so the benefit is that we we are starting and finishing the election in one location. But I certainly understand the the concern about effective date of office, you know, and the the amount of time between the election day and that.
So Stephen and I are aware that there's current legislation being considered. Do you want to comment on that, Stephen, or you want me to?
Yeah, no, it's just the, it's the budget that is on the governor's desk. Extends early voting to March 30th. And so I think there's a benefit, I think, I do think early voting will be yet again a significant component of the election process for the local, for the local election. And so right, right now, as it stands, if you're past March 30th, you won't have the benefit of early voting in the way that we have it now. And Kari, if you want to expand on that.
Yes, thank you. Early voting is something that, you know, through absentee voting in years past, people have definitely taken advantage of, and it it seems like that is the safest way to have the majority of voters participate, both for election workers and, of course, for voters.
I would agree, that would be a compelling reason to hold the date. I wasn't aware of that.
No, and whether or not they're going to extend it or not, we don't know, but at least-
But we don't know, so.
Yeah, so what they're talking about now is at least March 30th. That's, that's all we know. Terry?
So if the caucus would have to be January 25th, it gives us very little time, especially with with Christmas holidays, to get special legislation passed between now and then. And what happens if we don't get it passed by then?
It's a good question. I I would think that would be the very first thing we'd have to check out with our legislative representatives and see if this is even doable.
Yeah, I I saw Bedford's, if I may, Madam Chair, sorry to jump in.
No, please, please.
In their, in their bill, they they have indicated language such that if, if the caucus occurs prior to the legislate legislative session taking it up, that it would, it would be considered valid. That's included in the language.
So retroactive, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
They handled, they handled their town meeting with the same kind of provision, and it prevailed. So whether history plays out again, I don't know. Susan?
I was thinking along the same lines as Matt about the relative timing of these events, but the, to me, that March 30th deadline for mail-in voting is a kind of a, it turns, that's a deal breaker, but and which I believe Matt alluded to as well.
Yep. All right. So it sounds like we understand some COVID realities here in terms of what's in play. I think one of the the first things Town Manager and Kari maybe is to check out with our legislative reps how pos, how quickly, if this is doable, if how quickly we could
Yeah.
file a special act on behalf to cover our election in the town caucus specifically.
Yeah, I think we're just talking, the the election can, it's the caucus that has to be scheduled.
Correct, yeah.
So it's really, can we change the method of the caucus or cancel it if we believe it can't be done safely?
And if an, and and if we need to file an act to do so, do we have time to do it? That still gives people notice to meet that January 25th deadline or 25th proposed caucus date? Yeah, so there's a couple, couple pieces there. Kari, I have a feeling we might be talking to you again.
Yes, I will, I will be doing some homework in the meantime.
And also getting, you know, this, this, this is one of those items that seems to be the nemesis this year in terms of being able to finally publish an official town meeting calendar, but we've got to, we've really got to do it sooner rather than later. It's gone on too long. So thank you. It's just the realities of what we're dealing with here. Terry?
Oh, yes, in regard to the calendar in general, as I recall, it has public hearing dates and deadlines for submitting articles to the Warren and all of that.
Those dates we've agreed to, yeah.
Well, my question is whether the Select Board sees this calendar or approves this calendar before it's published, in terms of all those dates.
So we, those dates were shared with you in our packet, the draft dates were shared in earlier packet when we covered this. And, you know, this is part of the problem. This is part of the problem. You know, normally sometime earlier, at least no later than mid to late fall, midfall, I should say, no later than midfall, the public and our committees and and all of us have seen this official town meeting calendar with the election dates, and it usually also publishes key holiday dates that we need to avoid, et cetera. So that we all are, and and chairs have been asking for this and 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 we're asking for it, too. So we're working on. So I think this will be an item that hopefully is back on the calendar next week, on our agenda next week, so that we can turn this around. And it may mean that, so next week is already the 14th. Is that right? No, what was today? Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Next week is already the 14th, so, boy, unless the legis, our legislative reps and Kari, your clerk reps can say, yeah, we can turn this around on a dime, I think we'll probably be looking at another caucus date, just in terms of being able to give people ample notice.
Yeah, it just has to be before, it has to be, I think, at least seven days before the nomination paper deadline, though Bedford does have language in there allowing for a shortened period between the nomination paper deadline and the election. So it might be worth adding a clause like that in there. But Bedford did submit theirs end of, end of November, and they hold their caucus the second week in January.
Yeah, I think they're one of the early caucuses, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, they're, they're acting on the the clause that they've built in that says this is retroactive, depend, no matter when it gets approved, but it still isn't assuming an approval.
Yeah, of course, of course.
All right, I'm going to leave you and Stephen to
I do think it's pretty urgent that we finalize these dates, just given that, you know, the date until February where papers have to be submitted is not that many weeks away. So anyone that is imagining that they're going to be a candidate has a lot of, I mean, they need to get going, and yet we haven't really told them yet because we haven't filed the date.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Jane?
I was just going to say, to Matt's point, if, if we had a redone version sooner than next Monday, I mean, we could certainly potentially, you know, group in open meeting for that purpose. Or, in other words, we can make this a priority, because I agree with what Matt said and what we've all said, which is, we want to make sure that the election process is given full, full timeframe to happen.
Okay. So I, does everyone feel like they have their marching orders on this one?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thanks for dropping in, probably with not a lot of notice again, but I appreciate it. And this, this is critical, you can hear.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're going to move on to the Select Board FY21 Action Plan discussion. one of the things, one of the ways I I thought about approaching this and acted on it was to review all of our Select Board goals, the goal statements that we all approved earlier, match it up against and try to capture at least a majority of the activity. I'm sure it's not comprehensive, but capture a majority of action items that we've already implemented to some degree, to highlight some areas that are either in progress with some timeline specified for your benefit, and to also anticipate, and again, using the goal statements, to anticipate or call out items that we're already aware of for the next quarter, many of which involve already getting ready for warrant submission, preview meeting, warrant submission, public here, beginning to think about public hearing dates and a whole number of things, just so that we could see all of the things that have been in play, still are in play. But it was amazing how many goal statements we've already touched on, even if partially at this point, because some of these, there will be additional items that get added to to fill them out, so to speak. So with that sort of backdrop, I'm interested in your comments and also suggestions you may have for going forward.
I'm afraid that I haven't had a chance to review this marked up version, you know, so, because it just came out today, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, and so I've been at work, so I'd like to get more of a chance to actually take a look.
Yeah.
So I don't really have, I can't really respond here on the spot. Maybe others have had more of a chance to review.
That, that's understandable. Jane?
I, first of all, thank you, Linda. This is, this is really helpful. And, and to Matt's point, I agree. I mean, I, I could respond to a couple of things that jump out at me, but that's what's happening. It's just jumping out, and that's not a particularly productive way to go through the list.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I'd rather review it, and then maybe if we, it's got to Jeremy, our, our reactions, or we can just come to it next Monday.
Yeah, we can do that as well. Yeah. Terry?
I'm so happy to see this on the agenda, and I'm also glad to see, I agree with you, Linda, that we have done quite a bit of it already, so that's exciting. Before I got your markup today, I did, yesterday or this morning, go through the goals that are the last three pages of our packet, and I did underline, for my own benefit, some that I thought were really high priority, that I thought we should move on quickly. So I'm wondering if I should highlight those and send them to Jeremy, maybe like if every, everybody in the committee, everybody on the Select Board might want to mark up something, and then we have like one document to look at next week, whether that would be helpful?
Or, you know, it might be a good exercise for everyone with more time to go through for themselves, and then as we come together, that's part of the discussion that we have as a group. I think that that would be productive. Is that okay?
Thank you for doing this. This is so important.
Well, I couldn't help but think of our resident IT expert among us, one of our members here, who who would have laid this out in a different format. And certainly, Matt, you might want to think about that. I'm sure you already have, as you glance at this. But this was, I spent considerable time to at least sort of jumpstart this conversation for all of us. Hopefully, it will be helpful. Susan?
Yeah, thank you for doing this, and I particularly appreciate breaking down some goals for this quarter and next quarter and, you know, into specific timeframes, which will, is helpful in focusing on specific items. So thank you.
And, you know, I'm glad you mentioned the quarter issue because we're sort of straddling here. We are in-
We don't even have three quarters in our year.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. We're sort of, we're in the second quarter of the budget year, right? But in terms of, since town meeting ended in September, we're really only operating with three quarters of actual work time here. So, yeah, it's-
So I'm glad you brought that up, Linda, because one of my questions was, when you say goals for the next quarter, what is the time period?
I was looking, yeah, I was actually thinking January to March, yeah.
Great, thank you.
All right, we'll have a robust discussion next week, no doubt. You know, for the benefit of our new Select Board member who's not new anymore by any means, but, you know, we do, these are aspirational statements in terms of our goal statements.
We try to- One of each of the others.
Well, Jane, we're-
I'm sorry, I apologize.
The, we try to be realistic in terms of what we really do hope to accomplish, but in the end, we often are unsuccessful in accomplishing all of them or accomplishing all of them to the full extent, which is why we carry over some of these goals and objectives from year to year. But the intent is to, as much as possible, tackle the things that we've identified, so. All right, I'm going to move- All right, I'm gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is committee nominations.
Move to appoint Krista Collins of 55-
And our nomination, so we're moving-
Appointments. Move to appoint Krista Collins of 55 Highland Street, Sue Felsham of 19 Sunnyside Lane, Robert Hartman of 16 Concord Green, and Harry Bartlett of 95 Conant Street to the Junction Village Open Space Task Force for terms to expire on April 30th, 2021.
Wait, your second? Jane, thank you. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, thank you. Committee lawyers on reports, we did skip them last week in the, because of our busy agenda. So if you can be as quick as you can summarizing those in addition to the new ones you have. Susan likes to go first, Susan.
I do, I do. Planning Board met on November 24th, and they finalized their recommendation to ZBA about 13B comm. Ave. They had a couple more issues that they wanted to discuss, and requested that the app can consider all electric utilities and electric vehicle charging. But it's not a condition of approval. They also discussed their goals for the year, which include the Thoreau Business District, which will be on the agenda tomorrow night. And also, I wanted to point out, there's a joint ZBA and Planning Board meeting a week from today at 3 o'clock, so we can kind of get a sense of what's happening with there before we jump to our meeting. And one of the issues they're gonna look at is the floor area ratio, which was implemented in 2016, and the thinking behind it was to reduce the size of houses, but in fact, the reality of statistics gathered since that time have indicated that it hasn't really done that, so they might, they might be looking at amending that. I went to Trails Committee on November 24th, and that was a fairly typical meeting. They talked about bikes in the cemetery, and amongst other things, and that can, you know, that conversation will continue. Personnel Board met last Tuesday, December 1st. It was a fairly typical meeting of voting for salary increase plans and, and the actions that were taken at town meeting, and then classification actions that have happened since. There is going to be another meeting tomorrow night, and the focus of that is going to be what the personnel, looking at the, the charge for the Personnel Board and its relationship to the charter and the bylaws, and what's really a good role for that board, so that's gonna be an interesting conversation beginning tomorrow. Cemetery Committee meeting was on December 2nd, and they had a mausoleum, a rate hearing for mausoleums. There are going to be three in the old part of the cemetery near the Pope Mausoleum. The prices are a million dollars for residents and a million five for former residents, and it's divided into the mausoleum and the perpetual care, half for each. Then their planning, perhaps four in the new cemetery. The location hasn't been developed, hasn't been identified yet, but those will be 800,000 for residents and 1,200 for former residents. And they just, then they discussed some of their other goals. There's, Nick, this week, I believe, that finally, they're very excited because the record, record scanning project, which they've been talking about for quite some time, is actually going to take place. So there'll be someone on site, it'll be a two-day event while they're, while they're scanning all the records, which eventually will be publicly available online, so that's pretty exciting. And that's it for me.
Okay, Jane, thank you, Susan.
And I apologize for instructing my daughter on dog food a minute ago. So I, I had one question for Susan, and then I would love to give my, my updates. Susan, a million dollars per mausoleum per person? Isn't a mausoleum intended for more than one?
Oh, it is, it's, it's, I can't remember, it's six interments, or whatever you call, put it, no, it's definitely more than one. It's for the, it's for the structure which will have multiple-
For the whole mausoleum?
Yes.
Okay, I'm reaching back to my, my former days on the Cemetery Committee and when this was first being brought up, so, thank you. So I had a very light week, the week we didn't report, so nothing to report then. And then this past week, we had the, the NRC met on December 2nd, and both the, the two continuances were of the more controversial issues were moved to the following week, so probably the greatest discussion was around notice of intent by Westchester Company for Lot 2A on Cuco Road. This is the, this is separate of the development that has been haunting many boards in the, in town. And in fact, there was a, a lot of discussion around issues around the shared concerns with sort of some of the drive development, and it basically ended in somewhat of a stalemate, which we'll, we'll see it, we'll see it in the future. But clearly, everything, any kind of expansion by any of the interested parties into this other section of Cuco, of Cuco Road, which is proposed to be beyond Main Street, just after Route 2, just as a general location. It's, it's not a simple project, any of these, whether it be the larger development or this individual house. And then there was a discussion of, a notice of intent for 150 Garfield Road, an application to remove trees and regrade the backyard, which proceeded. And then also a discussion for applicability on Alden Road. Most of the other discussions were largely non-controversial. I, I also attended the multi-town gas leak initiative, which, interestingly, has, had, has a lot of overlap into some of the discussions we just had with National Grid. Because this, the party to this is National Grid, the multi-towns are roughly along the same lines as our Magic Towns, although Arlington is one of the, the chief movers on this. And we were treated to a presentation by HEAT, which is the, the group promoting two pilot projects in Massachusetts, which would deploy geothermal heating across entire neighborhoods. And this would be applicable to either a new development or an existing development. And this would be ground source heat pumps, but piped in across, you know, across a neighborhood. And therefore, be like a, in, in essence, you might want to think about, instead of putting a new gas line into a neighborhood, you might choose to do a, this multi-town geothermal, the, I think the technical term that they're using for this, which is a geothermal micro district. There's a pilot moving forward right now in Eversource territory. Next fall, the pilot for National Grid is likely to move forward. None of this is gonna be done quickly, and involves a lot of discussion at the DPU. But I think from a development perspective, and again, looking at our, our former warrant article on expanding gas into new developments, or actually opposing it, this would be a, this would be a natural fit for it. And I hope that anyone looking at a PRD or any other development in Concord would consider reviewing this.
Can I just ask a question about that? Are you saying that National Grid is going to pilot the project for geothermal?
Yes. In other words, Eversource is the first pilot that's going forward. And there were two places, one, not surprisingly, was in the Merrimack Valley alongside where we had the Columbia gas explosions. And then the second project is being developed by Eversource, and they're still looking at, they're taking applications for densely populated areas. So in other words, they, they offer the, the proposal for the pilot, and then, and then towns elect to, to apply, or projects elect to apply.
Thank you.
And then the last piece I, the last committee I attended was the Historic Districts Commission, which was really perhaps the most expansive conversation, was a review of the Jenny Dugan Historic Districts open meeting, which was held the week, two weeks ago. And it was a very interesting back and forth about, amongst the commission members, about what they'd heard. And reaffirming that the, the, the commission's not promoting or pushing, they're responding to interest from the community coming to them. And it's very much of a, an open discussion. Not surprisingly, what they heard at this first public meeting was a lot of concern and a lot of questions and a lot of pushback. But they're also, you know, in the aftermath, they're hearing a lot of interest. So this is, I mean, these are how the public process moves forward. It's not, it's not forced on residents, it's resident promoted, and then the Historic District offers the framing, if that indeed is something that the community wants. And that's enough for me.
Thank you, Jane. Who would like to go next, Terry?
Yes, I'll be quick, I had three meetings. The first one, the Capital Planning Task Force is inviting everybody to come to our Zoom meeting this Wednesday at 7:30 PM. We're having a public forum where we really, we want to do a brief presentation on what we've done so far, and then get the public's input about capital planning process. Second meeting was last week, the CPW, the bulk of the meeting was Streets Superintendent Aaron McClosko gave a really excellent report about how they're preparing and coordinating, like, like Stephen Crane was saying earlier in this meeting, there is a lot to it, to get the roads plowed and get everything, get all the equipment ready, get all the supplies ready, so gave an excellent presentation on that. And then Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, there's a few things going on. First of all, they are recruiting members, we need two new members. We think we might have one ready for our next meeting next week, but we still need another member. And if you want to apply to be on the committee, you don't have to be a bicyclist. We're also looking for diversity, we're looking for walkers, hikers, strollers, people in wheelchairs, or butters, we want to get some diversity on this committee. So please contact them, or Jeremy, or myself, about your green card. And the bulk of the meeting was spent with butters in the Stone Root Lane neighborhood, because the last half mile of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail will go right by White Pond, right through the Stone Root Lane neighborhood. And there was a lot of detail about, there were three or four different types of fencing that are gonna go up, and how the gates will work. And all of this has to be planned out in great detail. And then finally, there was a discussion about Junction Park, I mean, Concord Park Assisted Living had sent in a letter about, yeah, about Junction Park. And the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee will be drafting a letter to send to the Select Board. The basic problem is, there's just so much congestion there. There's people coming from all directions, bicyclists, train commuters, walkers, do we need better signage? How can we relieve some of the congestion? So they're gonna have to take a really good look at this, and then they'll be drafting a letter to the town manager, and it'll probably end up on the Select Board agenda at some point. So that's it for my report.
No, thank you, Terry.
Okay, I'll step in and talk about, first of all, the Community Preservation Committee that began deliberating on their funding recommendations last Tuesday. They did not have yet our Select Board and Town Manager priorities, so they weren't able to take those into consideration. So they'll be discussed tomorrow night, along with some town council input and other things. Then the Housing Authority met, and they approved their pilot agreement that is coming along with the re-characterization of their units into an LLC. There was some discussion among the members, just that, you know, the other nonprofit entities in town haven't really participated in these agreements. They are, of course, and they would encourage other nonprofits to consider them. Then Charles Phillips, who many of you may know, actually submitted his name to be nominated to the Housing Authority, to general approval by the members. So that may be moving ahead over the next few weeks. And then there are three elected positions, as we noted earlier in this meeting, that will be filled in the 2021 town election. So that, the Housing Authority members in particular are quite interested in knowing the election dates, and of course, we need to ensure that there are candidates to fill those positions, because there are so many of them this year. Then-
Matt, can I ask you a question about that? What about the fifth position that's, I think, a governor?
Yeah, so that position, who is currently the chair, Rick Eifler, you know, he is serving beyond the termination of his term, and that's just how it works, until the governor appoints someone new. And so what he had suggested is, you know, that, while they're going through executive director and all these other things, that maybe instability is not a good thing right this second, but he would like to retire from this position, which he's been in over 10 years. You know, and so we should be seeking to suggest to the governor that next appointment. So yes, the entire board will be turning over as of 2021, and then as well as the executive director and the administrative assistant.
So Matt, if, wasn't an additional issue in terms of Rick Eifler to see, perhaps see through the building of the new building that he's been so involved with, the new house?
You mean on the, on Commonwealth?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, though, I think that was a little bit more nuanced, is the discussion topic, yeah. Then the NMI StarMet Committee met, and they had a new draft, which is really coming together. It's, it's nearly in a position to be shared with us, I think we will see it in January. And they just discussed recommendations for the one chapter that's really not yet complete or in good draft form, which is the concluding section. And they, so there will be a public comment period starting in January, as well as, you know, our opportunity to review. And I do think that it's a very solid plan, just based upon the current draft, which I've reviewed. I've reviewed. So that's it for my report.
Thank you, Matt. I'll give my liaisons and reports. A couple of weeks ago, I attended a HATS meeting. Secretary Caneley from the Department of Housing and Economic Development was there. He is a resident of Lexington, I noted. And basically, they rolled out late October, I think it's a seven-point plan, which takes into the realities of the COVID pandemic and the impact on housing and economic development. If you go to the website, you'll see some well-defined initiatives, some of which, some which have already filtered down to our departments in terms of grant opportunities, such as trying to be revitalizing town centers, some additional monies for housing, affordable housing support. And it went along those lines. It's really trying to help towns recover from some of the impact of COVID at this point, and also take into account some of the stresses that the entire Commonwealth is facing in terms of housing, et cetera. At that meeting also, I already commented earlier on Bedford and the caucus issue, but the other thing that they noted is that they had received some funding from MAPC for a consultant, and they're, they're doing a year-long exercise with all their employees regarding anti-racist activities, diversity and inclusion, and they were really pleased to receive that grant money to go through that process. I've attended two joint school committee meetings since we've last reported. I have to say that the emphasis for, during these last two meetings, has been bringing in teachers as well as students to highlight some of the activities they're doing regarding anti-racism and cultural competency and inclusion, diversity and inclusion, and it's been very impressive what they've done. At this last meeting, there was an initial discussion about potentially adding an additional year for early retirement incentives. They were just beginning that, because they had a good response to that the previous year, and they're just now beginning that discussion, so it's, stay tuned for that one. I attended the CPC Public Forum, also viewed in real time the court proceedings for the NAGOG, since that's on our list for monitoring. Okay. And, and we have some other activities this week that are in, either legislative or otherwise, that are related. So that's the end of my report. Miscellaneous correspondence, there was from a butters' desk to Brook Woods, there were some additional concerns about alleged violations of the rules and regulations there. And there was also correspondence regarding the National Grid application and protecting tree root, tree roots in the, in the public way for shake trees. Are there any public comments? Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
A lot done. Thank you.